I'm not Wanderer.
Yeah, don't Wander.
Wanderer.
Tampa City Council is back in session if we can have roll call, please.
Dean Felder, Goode, Maniscalco.
Here.
Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Viera.
All right, we're gonna start back up here with our public hearings if we gotta, we gotta open them up, right?
No, they're open already.
They're already open.
They're open, okay.
Miranda made that motion.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna ask number eighty-two to be called up.
Number eighty-two?
Thank you. Counsel, I believe the clerk received notification from the petitioner on number eighty-two regarding a request for a continuance and Ms. Kurt is here to discuss that further. Do you have what the Mr. Singer said? I know when the counsel received the copy of it was addressed to the Chair, Chairman Viera and Sandy Marshall. We respectfully request a continuance for file number E-2019-a, chapter twenty-seven, scheduled to be heard before the City Council of the City of Tampa on November twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, at ten thirty a.m. We request a continuance to the next available time in the cycle of hearings. Please let me know if further information is needed. Thank you, and it's from Attorney Amanda Brewer. With that being said, I know we have members of the public who are here about that, and that being the case, Ms. Kurt, is there anything you need to add or wish to add?
Thank you, Rebecca Kurt, legal department. This was a request for a review hearing on a substantial change request to determine whether or not a change to the rezoning was gonna be a substantial change and require a new rezoning or able to go forward. Upon review of this application earlier this week, when I got the staff report, this application can't go forward as is. The applicant's representative, David Singer, was notified of that, and I'm not sure if he's had an opportunity to speak to his client or not. We did receive late yesterday afternoon a request to have it continued. I guess it's too late to get on your addendum. I haven't spoken with him personally, but it can't go forward as is, but he has requested a continuance, I guess, to identify his options.
And Counsel, if I can, just to review your agenda.
It's February sixth, maybe?
Well, this is, this is a review hearing, so I don't know where in the process it states. You have, you have December and you have January. It is for a review, and I don't know what Ms. Singer, Mr. Singer or Ms. Brewer intends. Technically, Counsel, you can make it as early as December fifth or December nineteenth, which is the last hearing, the last day before you make your.
Our challenge, I think, is how, aren't those December agendas typically slammed?
And frankly, if this is as complex or could be as complicated as Ms. Kurt indicates, they might need more time than this. So you count your suggestion, Mr. Chairman, was what date?
February sixth.
February sixth. Is the petitioner here? I came in late.
We do have two of the three here set for that date.
Okay.
We've scheduled today.
Thank you for that. What's the next available date after February sixth?
Twenty.
Twentieth? Okay. Do we have any reason to believe that the petitioner would be prejudiced by such a late date?
No, but if I may just explain to the public, then this would be continued to the twentieth of February, and I guess if there's an opportunity that somebody has an issue with that particular date, being that you were here the entire morning, you would have the opportunity to address the counsel. Otherwise, a motion could be made by City Council, and the only notice that you would have would be the notice that you get today, hearing it, as to the next date and time.
So if anybody is here from the public to comment on the continuance only for item eighty-two, you may come forward.
But just when talking about, no.
You're good? Okay. Let the record reflect a thumbs up.
So then is it Counsel's intention, then, for February twentieth?
Move item eighty-two or Mr. Whoever. I'll second it.
Yes, sir. And who, Citro?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Citro, seconded by Councilman Miranda. All in favor? Yes, sir.
Time, please. Ten thirty?
Ten thirty, yes, sir.
Ten thirty. Okay. The ayes have it.
Is that, so it was voted on?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That is the notice you will receive, so it's February twentieth at ten thirty a.m.
Sure, you betcha.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. We move now to item eighty.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counsel. Rebecca Kurt, Assistant City Attorney. I am here on item eighty. This is a petition for review of a request for a design exception. It is a property owner that's appealing. City staff reviewed the case and found that the applicant or the petitioner had not met the applicable standard, so this is a de novo review, so you will be able to take all new evidence. However, you will have to apply the same criteria that the zoning administrator applies. That is found on page two of your staff report, and I'll be handing out sample motions for you all to consider.
We haven't sworn.
I'm sorry. Oh, swearing, and if anybody here is speaking today and you have not been sworn in, please stand if you are able to do so and prepare to be sworn in.
Good afternoon, Counsel. Eric Cotton, zoning, our planning and development. This is for an increase in fence height for a property at sixty-three oh three Bayshore Boulevard. The property is, this is case number DE-1-19187. Property is on Bayshore Boulevard. Let's get a general oversight map of the property. The request was to increase the fence height from six feet to twelve feet. Mr. Mickelini has indicated that the fence may actually be a little bit shorter than six feet, it may be only twelve feet, I mean, excuse me, nine feet instead of twelve feet. I'll let Mr. Mickelini get into that a little bit when he comes up to explain his request. The property is owned RS sixty, which is residential, single-family, and RS sixty, the typical, the maximum height for fences is six feet. Back in nineteen ninety-four, they did receive a board of adjustment case would be considered a variance, to increase the height of the fence from six feet to eight feet. That was previously approved. Now, the fence height is along Ellis Drive, it's in this area, back over through here. There, and back in the back there, there's a tennis court, and I think there's a basketball court, and there are pool areas back there. It was the determination of the zoning administrator or my determination at the time that there was insufficient evidence to support the increase in the height of a fence from, basically doubling, a hundred percent increase going from six to twelve. This is the view of the property from Bayshore. That's the front entrance, and these two pictures reflect, these two pictures reflect the fence itself. As you can see, a little bit in the back, you can see some of the ball court in the back or the tennis court, and this is just, again, that's just the fence. In the, in my opinion, at the time when I was reviewing it, it was a hundred percent increase is a very large and tall fence without justification to support, to support it. The applicant had not, at the time, had not submitted any additional evidence to support the increase.
What you're showing now, is that the six or the eight?
This is the fence as it exists right now. The fence is already up. The fence is at twelve feet, or I believe this fence is at nine. So the fence is already existing.
It's already existing already?
Yes, sir.
Is that what it is? What is, what is that fence at now? Twelve, was it?
Mr. Mickelini will clarify. I believe he said earlier when I was talking to him, it's at nine feet, not twelve feet, but there's another, something behind you, he says that is at the twelve feet. So is this request we incorporate both? Counsel, any other questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Petitioner.
Good afternoon, Counsel. Steve Mickelini, representing John and Elizabeth Theophilus, they are the property owners. I'm gonna go through a series of pictures and site plans showing you exactly what is existing on this site right now, but one of the things that you need to note is this is a through lot. It goes all the way from Bayshore to Ellis, and they own approximately eighty-eight thousand square feet, which is nearly two acres of property. And their, their issue involves, let me, let me just show you here. This is, this is the subdivision, and they own all of these, all of these properties. This is the main property where their house is located. They also own this, this lot with a house, this lot with a house. This is a vacant lot that they own, and this property here has a house on it. This is the section that, you see the two red lines? That's the section that has a screen on top of the wall. The existing wall from here down is eight feet, and that was previously approved, so that part is not in violation. This part from here down to this way is, is eight feet, so that part is not in violation. There's a section right in here where they added a screen on top of the wall. Now, there's a great differential between the inside and the outside, but the outside measurement for here is about nine feet, six inches, and you can see Ellis Drive is right here, so the wall doesn't create a sight obstruction, it doesn't create any adverse impact on anybody else. It's not even visible from anybody else, except, except when you're looking straight at the, at the driveway, and I'm gonna show you the pictures that demonstrate that. This is a representation of the properties that they own. This is, and this is Ellis Drive, right, right here. So Ellis Drive takes a ninety-degree turn to the north, and this is a depiction of Ellis Drive and the rest of the plat and their ownership, so that when you're looking, when you're looking down Ellis to the, to the east, this is, this is what you see. So this, this is Ellis Drive, and it takes a ninety-degree turn north. This is the existing wall, and as I said, this section of the wall is at eight feet. This is a close-up, a little bit closer of the same view. This is a photograph looking south along Ellis Drive. This, this section of the wall is all at eight feet, so that's not part of this petition. And you can see right there, maybe you can see it, right there, it bumps up, and one of the reasons why it bumps up is because they had intrusion, they had issues regarding their athletic events, their baseballs and all this other stuff flying over the wall, and they were concerned about that impacting drivers on this roadway over here. This is a straight-on shot. There are eight grand trees immediately on the inside of this fence, of this wall, and one of the trees extends up and over the wall, and that's where they added three feet of screening. This is another view of Ellis. Now, this, this house right here is one that they, that they own, and they own the next two houses over here, so there is no impact on any adjacent property owner. This is a view looking south, and again, they own this house, and I met with the gentleman, the renter there, and he was very happy to be there. He's a member of the armed forces out of McDill. There's a sign indicating, this is looking south on Ellis, indicating you have a ninety-degree turn that goes to the west and then goes into the adjacent other, other residential areas. And here, here is where you see the stair stepping occurs. This is at eight feet here, this is at nine feet, a little over nine feet here, and this is a screen that goes up another three feet, and then that, the screen is there instead of a wall because this, this oak tree, this is a grand oak, extends out and over the wall, so they were trying to do something that was less obtrusive. This is a closer view, and you can see the screen here that's attached to the top of the wall, and you can see how they've cut this out so that it goes around the oak tree that goes through to the, to the property. All of this, all of this wall is, it meets the eight feet, and none of that, none of that encroaches into what was, what was not previously approved. There's another view to show you that the traffic is actually driving away from the wall, so it doesn't create sight obstructions, it doesn't create any adverse impacts on, on transportation or, or the driveway or access of any kind. They've installed security cameras on the tops of the wall, and I have a, I have a letter from ADT who monitors all of this for them, and it was ADT who recommended that they put the screen and additional one and a half feet on top of the wall to help prevent people from climbing over, which is what they were doing, apparently climbing over from this tree and climbing over and jumping down on the other side. They have had incidences. They didn't tell me how many, but they've had some. They've also installed additional security perimeter lighting because this is a remote part of their property, and there are several light poles that they've put in at their own expense on that section of the property. And that's all adjacent to the, to the portion that's now twelve feet with the, with the screen. Remember, this is not a hard wall. It's nine and a half feet of hard wall and three feet of screen. I'll read you the letter, basically, I'm gonna paraphrase from the letter from ADT, which says that they've met, that they recommended extending the height of the wall, that there have been some incidences, that they can't do anything else with monitoring, and that the physical barrier was acting as a deterrent. And then in terms of the definition in the city code, from, from a fence and a wall, it's a partition greater than twelve inches above grade erected for the purpose of enclosing a piece of land, a divide or a piece of land for distinct portions, to create or maintain a self-enclosure or to buffer any use from any other use for the quiet enjoyment of the property. I have a number of photographs for off-site examples, and I consider the one that we have as unique, and also we're gonna show you some photographs of other unique situations, and they're throughout the city where they have increased the height of walls. This one is twelve feet, and that's in Tampa Heights. This is UT on Kennedy Boulevard, and they have permission to go up to seventy-five feet. This is an enclosure in Tampa Heights for Tico. It's twelve feet. This is McDill and El Prado, twelve feet. Another picture of UT, where they have permission to go up to seventy-five feet. The wall that they have in the front is eight to ten feet high, and then the screening goes up to, they have permission to go up to seventy-five feet. This is a McDill just north of Gandy. That's a twelve-foot wall. This is Hillsborough Avenue on both sides. That's at ten feet, starts off at ten feet and goes up to twelve feet. This is, that's on the south side of Hillsborough. This is on the north side of Hillsborough. It varies from eight feet to twelve feet. Let me go through the criteria for you very quickly. It's located on the western edge of the property. At the right-of-way of Ellis, it makes a ninety-degree turn to the north. It does not adversely affect or physically impair the transportation aspects of this property or any other traversing property vehicles with, with the individuals traveling on Ellis eastbound. It does have a regard for the safety and security of the property. The westernmost edge is remote and difficult to monitor, so when they're trying to, they're trying to deal with the property along the far western edge of their property, they run into some difficulties. As you can see from this photograph, let me see. From this photograph, it's an extremely large parcel. It's, it's really an estate, and it's all under single ownership. So we're talking about this little corner in here, and it's thirty feet, thirty-three feet long. There's a hundred and seven, sixty-seven feet of, of run across that property line, so there's a hundred and thirty-some-odd feet that is in compliance and thirty-three feet that's not. The general intent of the code has been met in terms of the comprehensive plan, that these are, this is a very large parcel of land. It's a remote section of the property. It's very hard to secure and maintain. They have a constant monitoring service with a security company, and the security company has indicated that they do have intrusion issues along that side. Their main entrance is over here, and the house sits here, so it sits in the very rear port, back portion of their property. The exception that's being requested is due to the existing site conditions, and it's a reasonable consideration based upon the size of the property that they own and the issues that they're dealing with. The request is apparent, but the conditions of approval include the location at the end of a ninety-degree turn of the right-of-way and the potential liability created by the private recreational facilities. The remote location of the property and the lack of adjacent other property owners, it's fifteen feet away from the edge of pavement on Ellis, so it's not sitting right up on the edge of the pavement, so therefore does not create the obstructions that might be concerned on other properties. There are safety and, and security concerns, and as indicated by the ADT letter, they have had intrusion issues. The request is consistent with all the applicable standards and specific plans for the property, and this is a unique situation. I would, I would venture to say there are very few properties anywhere throughout the city that are this large and have remote conditions that have that many trees that they're working around, so they have done a good job at trying to preserve the trees, work around them, and also create a safety enclosure for their family. They're in the process, they, they own another parcel, well, you can see it up here, they own another parcel here. They're constantly trying to, to secure this whole area for themselves and, and their family, and they have done the best job that they can do to try to, to create a safe atmosphere for their families and guests. Here's a close-up picture of the security lighting that they've installed outside of the wall, and that's all along the wall. They've installed their own lights to kind of, to try to minimize the, the ability to, people to climb over, but you can see the limbs of this grand oak right here. They go across the wall, and that's where the screen begins, right at the edge of that limb, and it extends thirty-three feet this way. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. I believe they've met the burden of proof as applied by the city code, and there are numerous other examples that are unique throughout the city where they have applied safety considerations and concerns, and these folks have gone to extraordinary lengths to try to minimize the impact. It's not visible to any other property owner except driving straight down the street, and in that portion is at eight feet, not to twelve feet.
Thank you, sir, Councilman Citro. Then Councilman Maniscalco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mickelini, you keep repeatedly saying people that have come across the wall. Do you have police reports?
I have the ADT report, and that's all I have.
No police reports?
No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Councilman Maniscalco, you showed several different examples of other walls throughout the city. I think you showed the Seminole Heights area on Hillsborough, that brick wall there.
Yes, sir.
That was installed after the widening of the road, and then University of Tampa, which is unique because that's a, a playing field.
Exactly.
But considering that this is a two-acre property, which is not common for residential property in the City of Tampa, considering the uniqueness of the lot in that ninety-degree angle that you were talking about, where the wall is at, it's not, you know, it's not close to the property line, it's set farther back with that tree that's going in, so as a security issue, I can understand where someone can climb that tree and then hop over the fence, or why they would need that, that extension of the height. Also, it's a, it's a dark, poorly lit area, so people can, as it sits, people can hide there, hop over the fence and, and potentially break in. I don't know how, how their security is, but I think it's a unique situation. I think it meets, you know, the general standards that we have in, in our code. I don't, I don't see an issue with it considering, I don't know, it's just, it's, it's highly uncommon from, from, you know, other residential properties in the City of Tampa, so that's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Citro.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mickelini, do you have any letters of opposition or any letters that are in favor by the neighborhood?
Well, they, they are the neighbor, all the adjacent property owners, so I haven't received any phone calls, and I have not been advised by letter or otherwise, emails of any objections to this.
Thank you, Mr. Mickelini.
I did meet, like I said, I did meet with a couple of the neighbors while I was out there, posting the sign and, you know, taking pictures and all that, and they were just curious about, they said, why, does somebody objecting to this wall? We're happy with it, so I didn't hear anything other than that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, sir. Is anyone here from the public here to comment on item eighty? If so, please come forward.
Motion closed.
Second.
Motion closed by Councilman Maniscalco, second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Who would like to take this one? Councilman, go ahead, sir.
So I'd like to make a motion to overturn the zoning administration, administrator's denial of design exception for application file number E-2019-a, chapter twenty-seven, because the petitioner has demonstrated that the petition is consistent with the applicable, applicable general standard set forth herein in section twenty-seven dash sixty, E-five. The applicant has provided plenty of documentation comparisons to other properties in the city and has proven the uniqueness of this residential parcel and why this should be made.
Second.
Count, Mr. Sheldon.
Yes, thank you, and just for the maker of the motion, is that related specifically to DE-1-19-187? Item number eighty.
Oh, I'm sorry, I read the file number. Yes, it's DE-1-19-187. I apologize.
Thank you, sir. It was a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. You may build your wall and make Bayshore beautiful pavement.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Counsel. Appreciate your help and consideration, and wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. You too, my friend. Next, we move on to item eighty-one.
Thank you, Rebecca Kurt, Assistant City Attorney. I am here on item eighty-one. Eighty-one is another review hearing, which means it's also a de novo hearing. You will be hearing new evidence. This is a different type of petition, however. This is a special use request as opposed to a design exception. As you will recall, a special use request is a request that is a permitted use in the area if they meet certain criteria. This would have been administratively approved, except it did not meet one of the criteria. Therefore, it has to come to you for a waiver, and that's what you're considering today. I would call to your attention that this is a criteria that City Council has previously, I believe, made a motion to have changed. However, that hasn't happened yet, so they still have to come before you for a waiver. This is for accessory dwelling unit, and I will have staff explain the request in more detail, but I will pass out sample motions for you to consider.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Eric Cotton, planning and development. This is a petition for review for a special use case, SU-1-19-36, for a property at forty-four oh five Northland Avenue. The applicant or the petitioner is Kelly Santos. This property is in Seminole Heights. This is Lynn, Emma, Chelsea. You know, this is the property in question. The accessory structure that she wishes to make into an accessory dwelling unit is the detached garage that's right here in the back of the property. I'll show you the submitted site plan. The reason for the denial is, as you're aware, the, one of the criteria for the special use for accessory dwelling units is that it can't be in a place into a, into a structure that's non-conforming. This structure is only point seven feet from the property line. It needs to be a minimum of three feet. Therefore, it's non-conforming, so at the staff level, we have to deny the request because it can't meet all the special use criteria, then they come before Counsel for, as a petition for review. The top picture is the front structure of the house. Where the van is parked, that's the accessory structure, and in the staff report, I have the same picture for both the north and south properties, which is not correct. the north and south properties, which is not correct. So, this is the southern property that's adjacent to her, this is the northern property, both ranch styles, her house is a bungalow, and the board has any questions, they'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Petitioner?
Good afternoon, thank you for your time today, I'm Kelly Santos, I'm the owner of forty-four oh five Northland Avenue. My intent is to convert my garage to a one-bedroom kitchen-bath apartment, it's, it's five hundred and eight square feet, it's a detached garage, my main home is a thousand eighty square feet. There are two issues that I'm asking, I'm, I'm appealing, the first is a setback, and I'm asking that there be a design exception to reduce the south, south-side setback of garage from three feet to existing condition. This garage was built in nineteen sixty-four and has been as is for fifty-five years. The second is parking. My boundary survey shows two legal parking spaces, and I'm asking for a waiver to reduce the required parking spaces from three to two. My reasoning is this, I am the only person that lives in the home, I have one car, I plan to live there for the rest of my life. Due to the nature, the footprint of the home being a thousand eighty square feet, I think it'll probably go forward, be best suited for a single person, a couple, or a couple with a small child. Again, if I did, the other thing is if I did an annual rental with the garage, I would want to rent to a single person or a couple, so that reduces the number of cars also. It's quite a long driveway at eighty-eight feet, it's the width, that's an issue. In addition, I've met with my community, I met with my neighbors on either side, and my neighbors across the street, and all are in, are all are supporting this. I tried to meet with the neighbor on my south side, but they only speak Spanish, so I had a challenge with that. And that's it. Any questions?
Any questions from counsel? Any questions? Okay. Is anybody here from the public here to speak on item number eighty-one?
Move to close.
Second. A motion by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Meniskalko, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What's the pleasure of counsel? Sir, you're on a roll.
I'm on a roll, sir, I'm on a roll. I'd like to make a motion to grant this SU one permit, and the motion is to reverse the zoning administrator's denial of the special use permit application SU 1-19-36, because the petitioner has demonstrated that the petition, if the waiver is granted, is consistent with the applicable general standards set forth in Section 27-129. At the time of permitting, the site plan must meet all applicable code and technical standards, see also Section 27-61B and 27-127B2. And being that this is in the Seminole Heights neighborhood, I know that there are several accessory structures that are residential, and many that have been this way going back seventy, eighty years, that I've even pulled up maps of the neighborhoods, and those structures are there, and they were residential back before the interstate came through and whatnot. So, historically speaking, this is consistent with what is seen and has been seen in the neighborhood since the birth of Seminole Heights, which was sometime in the, after World War I, so that's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Meniskalko, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we move to, oh, Mr. Shelby, our last item, if you wish to present it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was your motion, and this is your resolution, item number eighty-eight. I have provided hard copies to City Council this morning, and I believe Ms. Jordan Lozo has provided them to your aide to put them into your book. I'm providing the original to the clerk, and it is for your presentation to counsel.
Yep, and, and just very, I, I think this is very non-controversial with this counsel, but it, the, the genesis of this, like, like with me, with so many things, arose out of a trip. I went with my son to Mississippi, and we're on our way to Ruville, Mississippi, and we went down the Mississippi Delta, and we passed by what used to be known as a parchment prison, which is now the Mississippi State Penitentiary, and, and that reminded me of books that I'd read before about convict labor, and, and then that got me started to looking at, at what's going on today. And like with so many injustices that, that may be just under our nose, and we don't think about them, it, it led me to the idea of, of private prison labor, where there is so much exploitation, and there is such a vast expansion of these kind of institutions that are prone to exploitation in our time. In two thousand sixteen, the then Obama administration had moved to curtail the use of federal funds for private prison labor, and then they have been vastly expanded under the present administration, and, and I just want to do everything that we can to oppose these, I feel very passionate about it. In, in terms of, we had had some nice folks comment talk about inordinance, I, I, you know, at, at this point, I wouldn't want to make city staff work on inordinance for something that I think is as symbolic as it gets, just my, my opinion there. But, so I hereby present this and go from there.
All right, we have a, we have a motion from Councilman Viera, do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen, okay, and, and I think that's it.
Did we take care of eighty-three?
Yeah, we did it together, joined.
Well, I must have missed a vote. Did I miss that vote?
I think so.
You have anything that you want to talk about?
Well, no, I don't want to talk about it, if I did, I was gonna vote against it, but I...
No, 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 we, we voted for you.
Mr. Miranda, did you want to...
You know what, you're right. Yeah, I, I, I'm looking at this, and I might have made a mistake, 'cause...
Want to retract your vote, maybe?
Yeah, I'd like to retract my vote.
Would somebody then please make a motion to reconsider number...
I make a motion that would bring back eighty-three.
Just a motion to reconsider number eighty-three.
Motion to reconsider number eighty-three.
And I apologize to the council.
Second. That's all right. A motion by Councilman Meniskalko, second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, eighty-three.
Yeah, I've just looked at it, and I, I honestly, I missed a vote, 'cause if I, if I voted in the affirmative, I've not voted in the affirmative for this at the beginning.
Then I make a motion for, to move this resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Meniskalko, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next we...
Motion carried with Miranda voting no, and Dean Felder being absent.
Thank you, we move to staff reports and motions, Councilman Goode, if anything, sir.
Mr. Chairman, again, again, thank you for your leadership on getting the university area CDC to come before us today.
Yes, sir.
As the young lady gave her presentation, presentation, a lot of items that we have been talking about and I haven't bring it to light on this board, they're moving forward and doing, and that tells me that I think we're, we're down the right road, we just gotta pave it and make sure we can get there. So, I just want to thank you for allowing her to come here and share the ideas that they're bringing, especially with the community business agreements, land banking, and a lot of the things that they're trying to transform age to do for that community, which is really prospering, as you see. So, I, I hate for legal and folks to do a lot of work, but these are pressing times right now, and people are demanding answers and wanting change, and the, the world is changing, we have to kind of change with it. So, at this time, I'd like to make a motion for the Real Estate Division and Legal Department to bring a detailed report for council on land banking for the city of Tampa, for the possibility of creation of an ordinance for adoption. I'd like this to be presented at a meeting on March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, that's the workshop.
Any discussion?
Well, excuse me, before we do that, sorry, Mr. Chairman, when we do the workshops, now we're trying to set times if we can. Did you want that at nine o'clock? That's the first one in March? Did you want to address something?
I, I just wanted to clarify, land banking for the purpose of affordable housing, or, because there are sometimes land banks created for other reasons, I just want to make sure...
Just a general overview of what, 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 what we could bring forth in this, in this city, so it could be housing, it could be whatever, I just want a general detail of what land banking is.
Okay.
So, people can know what land banking is, what's the purpose of it, how can it be utilized, how can the city be utilized, and how can communities benefit from land banking.
Got it.
So, that's nine AM on March twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty?
Yes, sir.
At the workshop?
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
And, Councilman Goode's, I'm sorry.
Puedo.
And Councilman Goode, if I could just remind you and the other council members for the benefit of the public, that on January thirtieth, you have a workshop scheduled at ten AM for the legal department to bring back something for the council to consider the community benefit ordinance.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
That's it, sir.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Meniskalko.
Yes, I'd just like to wish everyone a very, very happy and safe Thanksgiving, we will not be here next Thursday, so you won't be watching us, you'll be hopefully with your family and friends enjoying a delicious meal.
You won't have Puedo Meniskalko to kick around in the... That's right. Councilman Citro.
Mr. Chairman and council members, I wish to thank you in joining me on this letter to our legislative delegation about preemption. I thank you very much, I'd like to thank the legal department, I'd like to thank the administration, and again, thank you, Tim Heverline, my aide, for drafting this up, nothing more today.
Thank you, sir, Councilman Miranda, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and two items, one regarding affordable housing, request the City Attorney's Office to research the city's ability to use a nonprofit organization to raise private funds or create a pool of money to support and provide affordable housing assistance or programs, and report back to us on February twentieth of twenty-twenty.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And number two, sir, opportunity zones, request the City Attorney's Office to research and prepare a presentation to City Council regarding creation, operation, and benefits of opportunity zones, and to include any private companies or persons who have created or used opportunity zones, and the results and advantages, and to report back and make a presentation on February sixth, twenty-twenty.
Second. Thank you, sir, we have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
That's it, sir, have a nice Thanksgiving, all of you.
You too, my friend, Councilman Carlson, anything, sir?
Oh, actually, Mr. Carlson, you do, with regard to a vote that you took last week, I believe you are filing for...
Yeah, I just need to file my form.
I'll give it to you, the file's...
And briefly, if I may, just two small things, I motion for a commendation, this two thousand nineteen will actually be the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of an organization I love a lot, I got to work with them in the Warrior Games, the Jewish War Veterans of America, they were started to combat antisemitism, promote the patriotism of our Jewish Americans who serve, and combat that idea that we still fight today of dual loyalty, and I, I motioned that that be held at regular council on March nineteenth of two thousand nineteen.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
And then briefly, there's John Phelps, the good Samaritan who intervened when a HART bus driver was recently attacked by a box cutter, I, I rec, I, I motion for a commendation, and the said commendation be presented at the next HART board meeting on December second.
We have a motion from Councilman, Chairman Viera with a second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and, and...
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, I just, I, I, Councilman Dingfelter had to leave because his father was ill, and he has asked me to bring to council some amendments that he'd like to make, that maybe council can move.
Yeah, sure, somebody can motion him, sure.
Okay, if I can, I apologize, but in his absence, there are two things that are coming up next, there actually is one item coming up on the December fifth, which is your next regular meeting, which is a, a legal department to prepare and provide options as related to Chapter fourteen of the City of Tampa ordinances specifically addressing hours of operation, amplified outdoor sound, as well as distance separation. He is requesting council to make a motion, please, to take that off the December fifth two thousand nineteen agenda, and put that at ten AM when Catherine Coyle is going to be present, edit to the, create a ten AM workshop for that specific item.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second that motion. We have a motion by Councilman Meniskalko, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else?
Yes, sir, there is one additional thing, he made two motions today for the continuances of items number eighty...
Eighty-four.
Let's see, eighty...
Eighty-three and eighty-four?
Eighty, let me see, eighty-three and eighty-four, yes, thank you very much, what he's asking that to do...
Wasn't eighty-six and eighty-seven?
No, no, eighty, eighty-two.
Eighty-six and eighty-seven?
Ah, okay.
I was mistaken.
Well, see, I'm just, I'm just so agreeable, okay, is it eighty-six and eighty-seven? Yes, the Chapter twenty-seven, the five percent of the dimensional criteria, and number eighty-seven is the discussion and history of the bonus density pros and cons, he's asking each one of those items also be set as a workshop, each at ten AM, because Catherine Coyle will be here that morning, again, to remove, to change that date to the workshop on February twenty-seventh.
Second, I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Meniskalko, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, why didn't he just ask one of us to do it? I'm joking, sunshine.
Motion is even filed.
And, and before that, if I may, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and again, reiterate in closing what we, what we started this council meeting with, with our deepest sympathies to the Stras family again.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, motion by Councilman Meniskalko, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, we adjourn. And thank you again to Mr. Goode.